The Lord.
I mean, you're quick.
I'll check. I should go look.
You're quick. What?
That one time. We were like, oh. Go to Harrisburg and get these.
Oh, yeah. Are you there?
I was. Yeah, what? Sure. Yeah.
On the other?
Yep. Call it. Put it.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes of the meeting held November 12th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We, I do have two persons wishing to address the board, but it's on an agenda item, so they will speak at that time. Do you have a motion to approve the approve, uh, approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the good news report. Good evening. If you'll recall, last month during the good news report, we showed you a visual representation of some community partnerships that add extreme value to the education that we're able to provide to our students in the Sioux Falls School District. Tonight, we wanted to showcase one of those partnerships, a partnership that was established to give a CTE student, Cara Dirks, a glimpse into the world of animal care at the Great Plains Zoo. She and her supervisor from the zoo, Lee Spencer, along with Principal Josh Hall, are here to talk about this internship and why it's so valuable to Cara. So I will invite them to come forward.
Good evening. Tonight, I get to introduce two incredible people, Lee from the Great Plains Zoo and Cara, a Roosevelt student who also attends at the CTE Academy. Through our internship program and various workplace experiences, we're able to provide kids some things that maybe our coursework doesn't directly address and accommodate some of their interests that they have or some of their curiosities, maybe, to help them make decisions about their pathway after high school. And the Great Plains Zoo is one of those partners. I won't steal your thunder here. Maybe I'll, I'll turn it over to them to talk a little bit about that partnership and what Cara is doing at the Great Plains Zoo as part of her experience.
Thank you. My name is Lee Spencer. I'm the Education Services Manager at the Great Plains Zoo. We actually have two robust longstanding programs for students interested in our career field. One of those is our Junior Zookeeper Program that Cara has been a part of for several years. This is a summer involvement program for teens that lets them get a chance to experience a little bit of how the zoo works. It's run by our Education Department. Through that program, they get to learn how to educate public with ambassador animals. They also help with the care of our Hy-Vee face-to-face farm. That is just a summer program, though, with a few opportunities through the school year. We also offer a program for college students who are going into this field through our Animal Care Internship Program. That is a well-standing, a well-established program that is intended for college students who are pursuing the field. They work directly with our keepers and our animal care department, and they get a chance to gain experience for future positions. Our high school internship program and this partnership grew out of sort of a hybrid of those two things. This is something we don't offer very often, but we do occasionally, as requested. We were, we keep it to one student per semester, and we do prefer students who are already junior zookeepers like Cara. So they're coming in with a little bit of that background of how the zoo works to begin with. As a hybrid of this program, on one sense, they are working directly with our Education Department, so that's the same as that Junior Zookeeper Program. But on the flip side, instead of ju, instead of the supervised care of the farm animals in the summer, they're helping our staff with our ambassador animal collection day-to-day care. So she is getting to, to learn about the care of that ambassador collection that she's familiar with from the programs over the summer. And as that goes on, we do give her, we've been able to give her increasing amounts of responsibility. To start with, it was more like a job shadow. She got to see how things worked, maybe clean some water bowls, do some dishes. But as the routine has gone on and we've become more comfortable with her level of knowledge, she's been able to take responsibility for some of that care, always supervised by a staff person, always double-check to make sure that that is to our standards. But it is a chance, that program, as well as those other two larger programs, are a chance for us to really inspire the next generation of zookeepers and zoo educators and conservationists. So we've been really lucky to have Cara. She's been very good at learning the routine, and she's obviously very passionate about this. So I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about her experience and her side of this program.
I'm Cara Dirks, and as Lee said, I've had the experience to do a ton of work with the JZK program. But during our high school internship, I get to feel a little bit more what going to a job every day for five days a week feels like. I get to experience some of the things you wouldn't even think of. I can, as you can position, layering up for the cold weather and doing all that laundry that comes with it. Not to mention, I get to see the team projects that go on in the zoo every day. People work together. There's a ton of collaboration. I get to see professional teamwork examples, as well as professional role models. Otherwise, at the Great Plains Zoo, you get to see other positions related to what I want to do that I don't even think about, such as our commissary keeper, a keeper who makes diets at the zoo. I also get to see how different positions rely on each other and how I, if I get to a keeper position, how I play a role on other people's jobs and how other people's days go. I also get to see in those professional role models the skills and examples they set, so I can strive to be like them when I get to my position. I also got the chance to interview Lee, and I got to see who people who hire for my position, what they are looking for, and how to strive to be a better keeper. Most of all, it gives context to what I'm currently doing in high school. Currently, I'm in AP Psychology. We took a unit on learning and how we learn cognitively. And during my internship, I got to see one of our keepers train a macaw, and got to see that learning in action. Thank you.
Any questions for, for any of us?
I'm curious, how many summers have you been a junior zookeeper? Wow. That's amazing. I just think, you know, we, a lot of times get people in here from banks and from, you know, normal kind of business, everyday eight-to-five-ish kind of jobs that people foresee themselves going into. And so, as I was sitting here, I'm like, why is the zoo here? You know, like, that's so, such a different guess. But I think it's so awesome that you get to have that experience and that you guys can see the benefit of our students' knowledge. And I love the, how you can actually see what you're doing and how that applies to your coursework. So many times we hear, "I'm never going to use this when I graduate," you know? And so it's awesome that you can, not just in that one class. I'm sure there are several other examples of times where you said, "Oh, this is what they were talking about." So what a great example of maybe a non-traditional type of a career that people don't think about and how we can get our students in there to be able to experience that. So thank you for the zoo's partnership, and congratulations on all the things that you learned. And I hope that you get the position that you're looking for, and maybe you find something new that you said that you didn't even know existed that is something that you really want to do when you're, after you graduate. So, great job.
Thank you both, and thanks again to the Great Plains Zoo for partnering with CTE and Sioux Falls School District. And great job to you, Cara. And thanks for putting, speaking to us, and we love hearing from our students. Thank you very much. Move on to conflicts of interest. There were none, no, no, no new conflicts of report, interests reported. Move on to eight, approval of consent agenda items A, H-A through G. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion second. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Moving on to supplemental consent agenda nine. Nine A, claims to Sanford Health, Healthcare System. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Nine B, claims to Avra McKinnon. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor of nine B, claims to Avra McKinnon, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Now to ten A, reports of the superintendent.
Thank you. Our first report tonight would be a report from the School Administrators of South Dakota Preschool Levels of Excellence Report. Do you want to do?
Well, Todd says usually they go, but since they're not really going to, they're not really.
You want to let them speak first?
First, let's do that then. We'll, we'll, we'll modify and allow our speakers to go prior to the report. Would you like Rob or Kevin? It doesn't matter?
Looks like I'd prefer Rob.
Rob is going first. Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to you all. My name is Rob Munson. I'm the Executive Director of the School Administrators of South Dakota. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening and share just a little bit of information about the grassroots movement we believe will eventually have an impact on early childhood in South Dakota. About three years ago, our organization, School Administrators of South Dakota, decided that early childhood education was just too important to ignore. At that time, we made a commitment to move it to the top of the priority list and put in place a committee and plan to do something about early childhood. We weren't about to ask permission from anyone for what we were going to do. It was just too important. I was fortunate enough to grow up in a home where my mother was able to stay home and be that first teacher that all children so desperately need. Fast forward a few years, and those opportunities have disappeared for our youngest learners that need it the most. In fact, based on 2015 data, 76% of children under the age of six in South Dakota have all available parents working in the labor force. The national average is 65%. South Dakota is the highest in the nation. This means there is no one at home to nurture those children and to help begin their love of learning. I must say, we do have excellent preschools in our state, but not for all. There is also no agency making sure the quality is the same from center to center. The state of South Dakota refuses to have the discussion about early childhood, and through action, has defeated legislation to even put a commission in place to oversee what is going on in the state currently. That is where SASD stepped in to create the Preschool Levels of Excellence. Our process is a voluntary one where centers can measure themselves against what we believe are a minimalist of indicators for a quality preschool. If we truly want to see a difference in student achievement, and we really want to help our young children make better social decisions down the road, we must get them off to an even footing with a quality early childhood education. I commend the Sioux Falls School District for the work you have done with your preschools. The quality shows with the exemplary rating you have received on all your centers so far. We hope by your district going through this process that there will be even more awareness of the importance of early childhood, and the discussion can continue with a louder voice across the state of South Dakota. So thank you very much.
Rob, for the record, I forgot to ask you to introduce yourself and your address. We do that for all of our speakers. Thank you.
My name is Rob Munson. My address is 403 East Glen Drive, Parkston, South Dakota. I'm the Executive Director for the School Administrators of South Dakota.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for your time.
Kevin Nelson. And Kevin, will you introduce yourself and address?
You bet. I'm Kevin Nelson, and I am also with the School Administrators of South Dakota. I have been a longtime elementary principal, stepped down from that this year, and currently are working, and am working now for the South Dakota Public Broadcasting on an early childhood initiative. I don't quite have the red cardigan sweater and, you know, the loafers yet, but, but getting there really close. I am actually, my, you need the address, right? I'm 1100 Sunset Drive, Beersford, and longtime elementary principal in Beersford. Okay? And again, I'd like to do what Rob did, and I'd like to thank the Sioux Falls School District for taking on the levels of excellence. I had the opportunity to be the SASD representative who worked with Elizabeth and the preschool staff and the administrators on, on making sure that we were doing exactly what we needed to do. And I'm going to tell you that I had some of the most joyful experiences I've had in education in a long time by going from school to school in Sioux Falls and visiting the preschools that, that you have. And everything from the teachers, the staff, the students, everything about it was wonderful. I went in with a checklist of things, and I just tore it up, and I said, "This is, everything is where it needs to be," and it was absolutely fantastic. I want to thank again Elizabeth and Sue, who took me around and got a chance to do that. I got hugs. I got lots of hugs. I got lots of interaction with absolutely beautiful children, and you should be very, very proud of everything that you've done. I'm, I'm just going to end with this. And, and Rob mentioned that we're, we're struggling in the state of South Dakota acknowledging what preschool should be and, and so on. You're doing it right. You really are. But not long ago, I had a conversation with a legislator, and, and quite frankly, this legislator wasn't getting it at all. He didn't understand it, and then I put it in this context, is, is what I did. I just said, "All right, you're a farmer." And I said, "You're going to plant a corn crop. In the life cycle of that corn plant, which part of that existence is the most important? Do you worry about pre-emergence and post-emergence? Or do you wait until the Fourth of July, when you hope it's knee-high, and then you start to worry about it?" And I think a light came on with him, and he said, "Okay, I get where you're coming from with this. We just need to worry about the details." I think what we're doing here, what South Dakota Public Broadcasting is doing with the Levels of Excellence, I should say, the School Administrators, what PBS is doing, and so on, the other things we're doing is we're starting to get the flywheel moving, and we're in the right direction. I want to thank you for figuring out which part of the life cycle of your children is very, very important. So, thank you.
Thank you to both for coming. Appreciate it.
Well, Rob and Kevin, thanks for, number one, being here tonight. I think that shows your, your commitment to this issue. Thank you for your leadership with the School Administrators of South Dakota in general, and your leadership in early childhood education specifically. It's not only been, to be commended, but it's to be raised up. Thanks for raising this issue up with our state. Again, thanks for being here. Here to deliver the report for us tonight, from Special Services, is Elizabeth Jayhan Gary.
Good evening. Thank you, and thank you again, Rob and Kevin. It has been a pleasure working with them through this process. So the Preschool Levels of Excellence. The importance of it is having our children have access to high-quality, comprehensive programs. The School Administrators created or developed a preschool standing committee, and they developed a framework that modeled the 10 standards after the Early Childhood, the National Association of the Young Early Childhood Accreditation Standards. Included within those standards are 62 indicators that are used to measure and support how to achieve and maintain a high-quality preschool. With that, the Standing Committee developed a scoring tool, which was developed to identify where a preschool can fall on a continuum of three levels. There's proficient, which will show high-quality practices that are not consistent throughout those categories. And then there's distinguished, which is high-quality practices that are consistent in most of those 10 categories. And then exemplary demonstrates high-quality practices that are consistent across all categories. I am very proud to explain that all Sioux Falls public preschool programs, including our United Way funded program, as well as the Learning Adventures voluntarily completed the evaluation process, and it was a process. And I, I can't thank our administrators and our teachers enough because it was five weeks of a lot of hard work and dedication to put this together. So the teachers and administrators came together, and they worked collaboratively through the process, and the goal was to establish a common understanding. And they wanted to establish how Sioux Falls preschool programs may or may not meet the requirements. And then, of course, to establish goals for continued improvement. Each site submitted an initial online evaluation. One administrator from each of the sites attended a training on how to perform that final evaluation. And then finally, the administrators submitted a final evaluation. Just as Kevin discussed, SASD completed onsite classroom observations and tours, and we received a final score and placement given by SASD. I am proud to announce that all 11 Sioux Falls School District preschool program have achieved exemplary status. We have been posted on the SASD's website, and this Levels of Excellence is good for three years. So, we're excited. So with that, I would ask the board to acknowledge the informational report regarding the Preschool Levels of Excellence, and I will stand by for any questions.
I just want to commend your team for the extra work that went into going through this process. We all knew you'd make it, but it's still an effort to do that, and it just shows that the district is behind school readiness for our students. It's unfortunate we cannot reach all students, and we're working towards that, but thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions. I just, you know, I've been on the board for a long time, and I was on Head Start Policy Committee for, for a majority of that time. And I've seen the work that, that our early child programs have done and the, and the advantages that they've given those, those young kiddos. And it's just, we're very lucky in Sioux Falls to have these quality programs. And we do need to send that message to peer that we need to expand on this, not just for our kids, but, as you mentioned, those kids that can't be part of these programs, but also statewide. But thank you.
Thank you.
No more questions? Do you have a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of approving the SASD preschool Levels of Excellence summary, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Our second report tonight is the Social Studies Curriculum Implementation Report. Here from Curriculum Services to deliver that report is Anne Smith.
Good evening. After two years of study, the social studies curriculum was revised, and the materials were presented to the board for approval on March, in March of 2018. They were approved, and beginning in the fall of 2019, we began implementing the new curriculum. The teachers have now completed a year with the new curriculum and instructional materials. That curriculum is aligned with the South Dakota Social Studies standards, which were adopted by the South Dakota Board of Education in 2015. And the curriculum is aligned with the Ochetti Shakowin Essential Understandings and Standards, which were approved by the State Board of Education in 2012. At the elementary level, this was our first year for a soft implementation. Rather than all 500 elementary teachers receiving and learning to use the new materials at the same time, the 27 committee members who wrote the Essentials Guide spent the 2018-19 school year using the materials and making adjustments as needed. As a result, we realized we needed to purchase an additional resource at fourth grade for South Dakota history, and at fifth grade, we realized there were several resources we would not need. The result was a net savings of $29,601. The middle school instructional resources came from TCI and National Geographic. These resources were unanimously chosen by the Curriculum Review Committee and are technology-rich. Because of the increased importance of the technology component, the vendors provided teachers with a half-day overview in May of the technology resources, then made sure that each teacher left for the summer with a copy of the student text, the teacher text, access to the online teacher platform, and the vendor contact information. In the fall, the vendors provided another half-day of training. In lieu of director-called meetings in the fall, the vendors returned to Sioux Falls to assist teachers in their buildings with questions and concerns regarding the technology. And the district instructional coach continues to provide professional development on an individual and small-group basis to continue to help the teachers become more comfortable with those technology resources. High school offers 22 courses in social studies to provide a wide variety of opportunities for students to earn the three credits needed for graduation. Textbooks are purchased from a number of different companies. In August of 2018, teachers received training from the publishers on how to use the online materials and resources to engage students. Each semester, social studies teachers from across the district met to collaborate on best practices. As a result of this collaboration, teachers realized that they weren't adequately representing all of our students in all of their social studies classes, and so they worked to ensure that the Ochetti Shakowin standards were included in all social studies courses. Another change was to change Native American Connections II from a general elective, general elective credit to a social studies credit. At the same time, the name was changed to Indigenous Studies of the Ochetti Shakowin. Spanish Immersion World Geography and Spanish Immersion Global Issues are being offered for the first time this year. There are two full sections of World Geography this fall, and there will be two full sections of Global Issues scheduled for the spring semester. Both classes are taught entirely in Spanish and are open to heritage Spanish speakers, as well as our Spanish Immersion students. Social studies is an important area for our special education students. The social studies curriculum includes not only the concepts and courses we've just discussed, but also the social vocational and life skills courses for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities and social challenges. Middle and high school RISE teachers report that the new curriculum materials provide students with engaging materials that challenge them to meet higher levels of proficiency. The middle school Tier Two Social Skills Program uses the Second Step Online Program, Positive Action Kits, and a variety of novels addressing social issues facing teens today. The Tier Two teachers appreciate having a more substantive and relevant social skills curriculum to offer students with social skills challenges. Each high school had multiple special education teachers meet during the 18-19 school year to review implementation, update pacing guides, and analyze semester tests. The new course materials and online components are being used and appear to be effective in engaging students. With that, I would ask that you would acknowledge the report of the K-12 Social Studies Curriculum Adoption, and I stand by for any question.
Make a motion to approve the recommendations brought forth.
Second. Motion second, to approve the social studies curriculum implementa, uh, I can't talk tonight, implementation report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Anne.
Our next report is the, is the report on teacher focus groups. That report will come to you from our Community Relations Department, and Deanne Conrad.
Good evening, once again. We talk often that the district values ongoing two-way dialogue between administration and staff and other audiences as well. This is outlined in our strategic plan. And to that end, the teaching staff from each building, who represent various grade levels and subject areas, were randomly selected to participate in a series of focus groups during the 2019-2020 school year. We did break those groups up into four more manageable sizes, so kindergarten through second grade, third through fifth, sixth through eighth, and ninth through 12, recognizing that each of the groups may have similar topics of interest and areas of concern. Each of the four groups then was scheduled to meet three times throughout the school year for a total of 45 minutes each time. year for a total of 45 minutes each time before or after the student day. The first teacher focus groups were held in September 2019. Seems like a while ago, but yet it seems like just yesterday. During that meeting, Dr. Maher established the norms and provided an explanation for the purpose of those meetings. He then shared some important district information with our staff members regarding construction projects, following the bond, staffing information, and the process for forming new school attendance boundaries, which we'll be embarking on right after the turn of the calendar. And then went specifically into more detailed information with each of the groups. With kindergarten through 2nd and 3rd through 5th grade teachers, he briefly touched on the new elementary schedule implemented this school year. With middle schools, he addressed student demographics and diversity. And with high schools, the focus was mostly on open enrollment and its possible impacts for the future. As a result of that, Dr. Maher invited task force members to invite him to their classrooms, and he also had an opportunity to meet with specific groups such as elementary librarians, PE teachers, and art teachers, and a meeting with music teachers is also scheduled on the horizon. The second set of meetings then began last week and will continue through the month of December. Last week, we met with the K-2 group and spent the majority of the time discussing the successes and challenges of the elementary schedule. We have said multiple times over the years, Dr. Maher has been here, that we do an awful lot of pushing communication out, and listening is so critically important. And so that 45 minutes was an opportunity for us to ask the broad question, what's going well and what should we change, could we change? So very good dialogue and a lot of honest conversation that happened back and forth that provided good insight into how that elementary schedule is going this year. And there were some great points of success. So that's the kind of dialogue that we're looking for and encouraging our staff to continue to bring forth to us. So next, actually, I believe it's the week of December 10th, we will meet with the remaining groups, 3rd through 5th grade, 6th through 8th, and 9th through 12th. So again, I would ask you to acknowledge the informational report on the teacher focus groups being held during the 2019-2020 school year. And if you have any hard questions, Dr. Maher will be happy to answer them.
Just a quick -- just an observation, your intentional listening and the feedback and the dialogue concerning these really broad-ranging issues of diversity, classroom schedules, the boundaries, is so impactful, and it just really serves us well. And I just wanted to lift that up and thank you for putting those pipelines together.
I should also mention that our members drive the focus group agenda, if you will, in that they provide us topics that they wish to address, and those topics did come out in our kindergarten through 2nd grade meeting. They brought them, and we used that as sort of a springboard to ask a question about a variety of things. And so that's one of the goals, is to have them be able to communicate through a Google Doc. They can share their question, their comment, their concern for themselves or for any staff members that they may represent in their building as well.
As I mentioned at our before-school started big meeting out at the Pentagon, that communication is so key, and I just commend Dr. Maher for taking this on in addition to all of your other duties, but checking in with the staff because it is, you know, we might not always agree on everything and so forth, but having that communication open and feeling heard will hopefully overcome some issues when we do find we're not agreeing with something. And it's just, it's been something you're so good at with the district, Dr. Maher. So we appreciate that as a board, and it's helped us as a school district, so we need to continue to do that with our staff. And with having over 3,000 staff, it's not an easy task to take on. So thank you, and thank you, Deanne, for your assistance.
Do you have a motion to approve the teacher focus groups report?
Motion.
Second. A motion second. All those in favor of approving the teacher focus groups report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, our next report is the Capital Improvement Plan Update. Here to deliver that report from Operational Services is Jeff Kreider.
Good evening. Tonight's going to be a good news report, I think. What I'm going to do is give you an update on a high school guaranteed maximum price contract. The project will, we've received all the bids now, or almost all the bids. There'll be a few of them within the allowances that you'll see, but this one will be, we'll also outline all the alternates that are in the GMP and allowances that we have, and I'll explain as we go. So with that, I put a PowerPoint, you know, this is kind of new to me.
Step one is making the PowerPoint. Step two is running it.
I thought we were started, but I guess not.
It's a great cover slide.
So what we'll do is we're going to present the costing by the line items that we had in the initial GMP and what's in there and what's changed. So you can see the changes and where we are currently. So hopefully, we can see that. It's a little easier to see it, you know, line on and by line. Thank you. That's the hardest part of this presentation, I think. So. But basically, Journey has compiled all the bid items, the bids. I think the first time, we only had Phase 1 bids received, and then we did Phase 2 and 3, and we did some rebidding with that where we thought we had some high numbers. We broke them down and actually got more favorable numbers. So with that process, it gives us that flexibility and not sold the project down. So with that, we'll go through them. The first one is the direct construction cost. The initial was $63.7 million, and the final wrap-up is $59.8 million. So I've highlighted and read on this presentation the changes. And then you have the general conditions staffing. This is what, when we did the interviews, was the number that Journey gave us that they were gonna, it was going to cost us to do the onsite supervision, onsite, everything coordinated in the project. That remains the same. General conditions at this point remains the same. That's temporary heating, the job shacks, everything that's associated with the project. It's not in that first number. Then construction contingency. There was a 5% construction contingency initially. They've lowered that now to 3%, and so it's now at $2.1 million. That's for things that happen in the field that's kind of just, you know, things that weren't anticipated, soils, things like that. So that will be used throughout the project. And typically, what we like to see is about a 2%, so there could be some savings in that. And we're out of the ground now quite well, so hopefully, that will still be there. So then, what they did was put an owner contingency, which is about $5.1 million. That will be for, if there's anything that we want to add or do or change that is outside the scope of the project, and that's what that will be. I know there's going to be a few items. We've talked about some flooring, where we have concrete floors now, some, I just found that New Tech, they have concrete floors in there. Talked to Dolly that they want carpet in those. So those will be, I don't anticipate a lot of big things that will come up. The tech ed wing was put on later, and that's in there, but we're having a meeting in December with their staff, so there might be a couple little things, but I don't see anything too significant with that. As we develop furniture packages, we might move some of that to casework, and then we'll put that in the project. So instead of furnishing, we may have casework. So it gives us a flexibility to do that. But there are, there's another pot of money for furnishings that will, that will all take into account as well. And then insurance, taxes, and bonds and permits, that remains as is. There could be some savings in there as well as the scope of the project. The bonds will be a little less than that, but nothing significant at that. So the total estimated cost, 74, if you add the owner contingency in. Then Terry Avenue, we broke that out separately. That still remains the same. All the utilities are in, the gravel base is in. You'll see the paving and those sort of things happening, but we kept that exactly the same, and there's a contingency on that as well. So that's adding all those together. Then if you look at what the total, when you take the owner's contingency out, it's So in a good position as well. So what allowances yet that we still have, some pricing within that GMP yet to work through? The graphics and the mascot image on the gymnasium, that's the outside one. I think we talked about that. We're not going to do the embedded in the pre-cast because we still don't know what that graphic image is, so, and they're putting pre-cast panels up as we speak, today. But so that's in there for $20,000. Painted image, put a graphics inside the gymnasium, once we have that established, $5,000. The interior video scoreboards, this is all the scoreboards in the project or inside the gym, is $250,000. And that would be hopefully enough to cover what was put in the other three high schools this summer. Exterior football scoreboard, that'll probably be in that same package, $35,000. Site furnishings, bike racks and benches. This is not the benches in the courtyard, but, you know, some miscellaneous benches and so forth. We didn't get a bid on that one, so that's why that's hanging out there. And the DAS system, that's a new thing required by the city to enhance their radio communications within the building. We won't know the full impact of this until the building's enclosed and we do an analysis of how it's picking up the radio signals in the community, so.
Do you want to address, like, I have a couple questions on that.
What now?
Not really questions, but like, just public awareness about that, like, what it could impact.
Well, this is something that has been in the code, but cities never required it. They have put a city ordinance in and saying that high schools and various buildings, public buildings, the first building that I'm aware of, it's the Vera Hospital on 69th Street. So they made them do that, and they're starting to make a lot of people put this in. So there's a city ordinance with it. It basically takes a radio signal and pumps it out inside the building of the Metro, the police and fire. Bob has been doing some work, legwork behind the scenes on that with our existing system because we can route, we have different things than normal people do as far as our radio communications and how we can route through Metro, but so.
There's the potential the other high schools will have to do this as well in the future.
And it's looking like, I had a meeting with Dean Lanier, that we may be having to do this in our other three high schools. So I'm waiting for an official letter with them and see where that, what the magnitude of this will be for the district. Okay, then the alternates included in the final construction cost in the GMP is composition, wall joints, this is all metal panels. This basically puts a rain screen where you don't have to use caulking. It will save us in the long term with that, so you don't have to have caulking like this building does. We're almost on the third re-caulking of this building. It just, it eliminates all the unknowns with that. Vertical sun control devices. In the design, they wanted to do a metal screen over these big windows, and we kind of compromised into vertical kind of devices that hang on, but they're not, you can still see through the windows, doesn't cover the windows up. So, I mean, it will enhance the look of the building and will also control some of the sun during the winter months through the burning streets. Alternate A3 is movable wall finishes. This actually surprised everybody because we thought this would be more expensive than going to the marker boards, and this is actually what the design committee wanted. So it's more cost-effective, and that's what they wanted. So full marker boards on the movable walls in the classrooms. And this next one is a travel finish on the learning stairs. The learning stairs originally was going to be a painted urethane. I thought let's, why we're here, I'm not a big fan of the, it's going to be more vandal or a lot of different things, and it's also about $40,000 to paint it. The urethane, a multicolored urethane. And so this one actually puts the same floor finish that's in the commons on those learning stairs. It's about an 80 to 100-year solution instead of having to repaint it when everybody scratches it up, and so it's going to be a far better solution long-term. And then an alternate chiller. This is actually another DDUCK. This is a chiller that the engineers recommended that we go to. It's a newer technology that's quieter, it's more energy efficient. We did the other one because we didn't want a sole proprietor in the bid process, so we allowed everybody to bid it, bid their own, and then this one actually, we, everybody thought it was going to be more expensive, so I think we're going to be a winner on that. And that's it. So the project remains on schedule for a May 2021 turnover to us. The overall budget, if you look at plugging in the overall budget right now, is about, if you remember, initially after the first GMP was about $200,000, we're at about $5.3 million to the good of what we know today. There's still a lot of unknowns, but when you look at the overall number of the budget, we're 75% there, so we're in a good, pretty good position. And we'll bring back any changes for your approval, you know, prior to us doing anything on that contingency. So you'll have that, I'll either do it here in this, or it'll be a change order in the board. So you'll have the ability to approve all those. So with that, administrative recommendations, approve the constructions updated GMP and the allowances and alternates as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions?
Jeff, I just appreciate all the effort and all the i's dotted and t's crossed. You're really good at this, and I appreciate all that you do to make sure this is running smoothly for us.
It's always good when the numbers come back.
That's why we're all happy right now.
Makes it easier. But just remember that, you know, this is about what the inflation that we built into this program was, was about $5.1, so that's what it is. But as we move to some of these others, what will that bring? Some of those renovations that are coming, you know, I don't say we're out of the woods until we're done. Some of those will have some impact and issues, but so far, we've been really doing well, so.
As we know, renovations typically have scarier consequences than new buildings run into problems. Single more questions? Do you have a motion to approve the report? Motion. Second. A motion second. All those in favor of approving the Capital Improvement Plan Update signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11, setting the 2020 election date. Maybe I should ask my vice president, do you read this tab usually?
I'll just give you some.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Since President Mickelson's term will expire at the end of this school year, which is the next calendar year, 2020, we have to set the election date since 2020 is an even year. We're proposing that, as usual, we combine with the city and have our election in combination with theirs, and their date is April 14th. So, you have a timeline on the back of the resolution. So, that's one of the key dates on there. So, the election day was proposed to be April 14th. That would, so then if you back into things, on January 31st, you can begin circulating petitions, candidates can. The last date of file would be February 28th. March 30th would be the deadline for voters to register. And then we'd have the election, as I just said, on the 14th, and then we would canvas the results. We have April 28th on there, but it would actually be the day before because that's our last, that's the fourth Monday of the month, so it'd be April 27th. And so that's kind of a summary of what you've got there. So, we would just ask that you approve the resolution that you've got in front of you, making April, setting April 14th as our election day, and that'd be in conjunction with the city of Sioux Falls in accordance with our contract that we have in place.
Thank you, Deanne. Any questions? Singun, do I have a motion to approve the report for the, or the election date as April 14th, 2020?
I'd make a motion to approve the April 14th, 2020 election date in connection with the city election.
Second. I have a motion second. All those in favor of setting the 2020 election date as April 14th, 2020 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a?
Second.
A motion second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by aye.
Aye.
No, all those opposed, same sign. We adjourn? Thank you.